Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Whitehall City Council meeting for July 21st, 2020. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, or I'm sorry, start with a moment of silence, and please keep Sylvia Knoblock's family in your thoughts and prayers, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. O'Neal, would you please call roll?
Bailey?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Present.
Elmore?
Present.
Coniston?
Present.
Cantor?
Present.
President?
President.
President Quarr.
Present.
At this time, I will accept a motion at the approval of the July 7th, 2020 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second? A motion has been made by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Cantor. Ms. O'Neal, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
President?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. Next on our agenda, we've got a special presentation by Police Chief Mike Crispin in reference to Ordinance 49, 2020, Racism is a Public Health Crisis and the Progress of Whitehall Police Department to the 21st Century Policeman. Chief.
Mr. President, Council, Mayor, is it okay if I pull this off to speak?
Yes.
No, you can't.
No, I can't?
Yes, you can.
No, you can't?
Yes.
There you are, just if you want us to hear you. Yes, thank you. Again, I want to say thanks for an opportunity to come in and talk to all of you about something very important, and just by opening this up, I know the slide upside down, since I think I love that now. So, one of the things, and I really wanted an opportunity, I hardly ever get a chance, other than town hall meetings and individual conversations with the mayor, whether you want to be, I had a chance to sort of, number one, fill you in on just what's going on in law enforcement in the department and in the city, but also from an advisor's perspective, because I often say this, and I say to our folks all the time, and I know I said today, talking to the councilwoman Elmore, which is, when you think about what we do, and I talk this all the time, and the mayor says she hears it all the time, the job of all enforcement is to do one thing, and that's protect people's life, liberty, and property. That's our job, right? All the rest of the stuff we do is just how we do that. And we do that through a constitutional system, and that constitutional system doesn't say police officers anywhere in it. That's you folks. You folks are the ones that are totally responsible for life, liberty, and property protection in the city of Whitehall, any other like officials in their jurisdictions, and so we take your guidance on how you want that done. I know the world is supposed to be the experts in how it's done for best practices standards, and we do that as best as we can, so. But I want to emphasize that because we want to work with council, and when I looked at Ordinance 49, when I was reading it, and I want to jump right into that, when I looked at that, and I think some of you might saw, or at least heard, or the mayor has, about the whereas's that was listed in that, my first thoughts were, you could have taken a committee of our police officers, and they would have helped you write that. There's nothing in there that they didn't already know, right, that they weren't supportive of, and they recognized as an issue, socioeconomic problems that we have in the city, in the country in general, some of the problems with housing, and jobs, and things of that nature. Those things played right, yeah, economics and crime reduction, we go hand in hand, right, so those things are extremely important, and we're very glad that you're taking that very serious. But I want to talk to you, because 2020's been a crazy year, I don't think you've not noticed that, right, it's been pretty nuts. And so, I want to tell you something about your police department. I want to tell you something about that for a reason. If you go back to February, March, these officers had thought, and quite frankly, so did I, that we were going to lose some officers, at least seriously sick, if not potentially killed, due to this pandemic. I had to speak to a couple of the officers and ask them to make a decision. You're either going to have to not work right now with us, or you're going to have to not go home, because you're going to take this back to your families. And whether you know it or not, several of them are living in city buildings, at the end of their shifts, rather than going home to their kids. There's a couple of stories that I, and I don't want to tell you stories, but there's a couple that always rub in my head during this time, where some of the officers were even out working in the community, and I was told to tell them, talk about this, so I will, but, who were going out and using their own money, which isn't abnormal for them, it's pretty normal, I have to track them down and find out when they did it, putting people up in hotels, paying for people's meals, and one case, rather than arrest someone for shoplifting, because she was, again, trespass for having shoplifted at Walgreens, the officer decided, it's much easier if I just go in and buy the ibuprofen for, and then take over his car and say, call me if you need something later. He's tired of arresting her because he knows she needs stuff, right? This is what your police department does, this is what I know about the police department, the sacrifices that they make. Well, we're perfect, no one's perfect, but they are very dedicated to the citizens of Whitehall. So as I began to look at some of the stuff we're doing, I need you to understand, what in the last three years, these officers, I pushed them in ways that they probably have never been pushed. We pushed them to work hours for three years, that wore them out. It resulted in grievances at times, because we were pushing hard, and trying also to do that, and keep the funding down, in order to accomplish it. And the results of that was, I believe, citizens believe, and jurisdictions around us believe, that we've reduced some serious crimes to levels that were unprecedented. So, that's what's been going on the last three years with these officers. Part of the stuff that we had to do, and I think this is what Mayor and I talked about when I was hired, was that I needed to come in and look at the crime rate, but also change culture. And one of the things we did, in talking about culture, was start driving a message of inadmissible rights, constitutional liberties, and stuff in people's heads, the officers does, in what we call Rule 14, Rule 13, which is do the right thing and take charge when you're in charge. So, as we began to look at that, one of the very first things that we did was take a look at racial bias reporting and things of that nature that weren't in place. We are the only city in the area using a model that we're using for racial bias reporting, and we use it to check officers, not necessarily for what I refer to as over-race system, because I fire them for that, but for what some people refer to as implicit bias, where things happen, and they don't realize it's happening, and they start to look bad, when you start to look over here and upon them. So we track those numbers to keep people in check, and make sure that we're not doing that, and check that quarter. If you look at the 20th person, if you're familiar with that, 2015 President Barack Obama asked 21st Century, what he, a committee did. The Boarding, there were 47 specific recommendations that would actually impact a city of this size. Of those 47, we've implemented 45 of them in the city of Whitehall. The 46th one, you've sort of just implemented, which is a civilian review board, and we've never been concerned with that. The 48th one, as long as I'm here, I will never implement. So, that's the choice you have to make, and that is put, not allowing officers to wear military-style equipment in large mass gatherings, because they're getting hit with rocks and bottles, and our officers had brought the stuff, bottles going out in the rocks. I'm not supportive of that. They have to have something to protect themselves. Other than that, I understand the whole concept of not looking like military, and we do our best to make sure that's not what we're representing, but not having those types of resources would be a serious mistake, and I would not ever be supportive of that. When I looked at Ordinance 49, I sort of looked at that thing at the top, and thought to myself, you could have looked at our strategic plan, or some of you read it, and looked at that mission statement, and you would have found a phrase in there that said that we are committed to enforce laws in a fair and reasonable manner. And we, that's our mission statement, and we measure that in two things, constitutional culture, which I just talked about, right, and technological accountability, which is those mechanisms we use to track people, and a couple of them, I kind of walked you through the rookie room, I didn't bring it in today, because I think a couple of you tell you it takes about an hour or so to get through all this stuff, right? Someone said today that I'm short on words, but I'm thinking you don't know me very well. So, as I was going through that, I looked at Ordinance 49, and I had a couple of things I wanted to sort of bring up in here. One was, and I know we're working on this, Mayor, but they're looking at our policies and our processes, and what's referred to as a racial equity lens. I'm glad to see in Section 2 of that, it talks about, we're going to wait for some terms and definitions and stuff like that to come from Franklin County Health. I don't have that definition of terms of racial equity lens, unless you're meaning the same thing that I mean, which is, we protect people's civil liberties, people's rights, their native rights, life, liberty, and property, and I can promise you, every single policy that goes through our department, I personally approve. If it goes to multitudes of attorneys first than it gets to me, if I have questions on them, how it might impact Whitehall, it goes to Mr. Bivins. So, every one of them, in my mind, meets the constitutional standard of protecting people's civil liberties and best practices in policing. Some of it's about what color your uniform and apparel, so that's probably irrelevant, but the stuff that's relevant to this has been measured. However, we withhold an opportunity, that when those definitions come in, maybe there's things we're not thinking of, we're not to know it all, and you are the decision-makers for what you want your policing to look like. So, until we see what that definition looks like, I have to say it's going to be very difficult for me, other than to just say, I think it does, because I never would have put my name on it, if I thought it had a racial problem. So, however, again, there are things that we're all learning, as society begins changing a little bit, as an approach to policing, there is a, there's all of us learning that there may be things that we're not aware of, and so I reserve the opportunity to sort of adjust, in case there is something that we just weren't aware of. But as of right now, I think from that standpoint, I don't know that I can actually technically meet that, to answer that, until Section 2 of 49 is accomplished, for that to make sense. As far as the community relationship piece of this with the police department, I think I've said this a couple of times, I think you guys know, but the number one problem that the community has always said they had concern, I should say, is crime in Whitehall. These guys have done a pretty good job in the house of reducing crime rates to levels that have done a lot of good, I think, for the department, but also mostly for the city. Housing market's going up, jobs are coming in, Whitehall, as I keep saying, every so often to the media people, this is a train, you better get home real soon, or you're going to miss it, it's the best kept secret. That has a lot to do with some support you guys are giving us with resources and stuff, public safety, fire, everybody, but it also has to do with the efforts of these folks that are going out, hitting the road and reducing the crime. So, to know that, and to then also know that we have a 55%, I think they're close, on the minorities in Whitehall, to know that that's where we are as a community, and to know that this community still rated the police department the last time, de-hydrated department in the city, says a lot to me about community relations. Not to mention all the food, I keep asking, equipping. So, that to me means, I know that our department has a great relationship, we get tons of people's stuff in all the time, and they stay up on the streets, so we're confident of that, but does everybody love us? We're like mom and dad, right? That's our job, is to tell you, you can't do something, and then we're going to have to do something about it when you do. So, we're not going to ever make everybody happy, any more than you always make your family or your children happy, but there are times when we have to do something that upsets people. We try to do that, again, in a fair and reasonable manner, and then we try to make sure our guys are going. But I wanted to say this, the effects of Ordinance 49 is very, very real in the police department. It's real for a reason, and I've talked to a couple of you about it already, it's not that, there's not agreement with the issue, right? The question that is asked often is, was Ordinance 49, as it relates to changing and addressing policing in Whitehall, or was it a relationship towards, just in solidarity of what was going on nationally, Franklin County, and so on, when it comes to policing processes, right? The oversight that now needs to happen, the things that we're not concerned about, but it was questioned, why is this all of a sudden just popped up that Whitehall police now have to have all these things because of something that never happened in Whitehall? So that's, they don't like it, they didn't like it, and we talked about putting a press release out, or a release out, almost the day that that happened, that that would never be tolerated in Whitehall, but things got a little bit too ugly and Columbus, and we didn't want to bring unnecessary attention after that. But, I'm telling you, that the department was as upset and hurt by seeing that type of behavior in the law enforcement professional as anybody else. And so, when Ordinance 49 came in, they're like reading it, and they're saying, that's right, that's, I agree with that, that's, we need to do something, and we've been needing to do something on that for years here in Whitehall, to help this community, much of which we have no powers, police officers, to do. But we can reduce the crime, and give you folks an opportunity, and develop the opportunity to do it, and I think that we have done that. So that when they see this, we need to now address, we need someone else to look at what they're doing, use of force, why, and again, I've always located that anyway, and I told them that. And it's the timing, right? So if it had been 2019, we wanted civilian review board, I said, that's going to be fine, it'll probably be going to be easier on than I have was, but that's fine, because I'm probably still going to hold them accountable, more than you would. But now, it's the timing of it. So the reason I'm bringing it up was, proactive policing in Whitehall is darn near halted. Officers, as much as we push them, they'll do their job, we aren't going outside the city to get the people bringing the drugs in here for a couple of reasons, because they'll need to take that problem, if we kick indoors and something happens, into Mayor Dinter's area, or into Chief Quinn's area, other chiefs' areas. Everything's sort of just done this, if that makes sense, everything's died down, and people aren't moving and doing things that they normally would have done proactively. I did a survey of the officers, because I wanted to sort of know, where are you, and I made it anonymous. And when I made it anonymous, I know I'm going to get the truth, because I read some stuff about myself in this, right, which is fun, right? And when I read this, I saw this, 93% of my officers responded that they are worried about their career, very worried. 88% of them are now worried about them and their family's safety. Some of you don't know this probably, but there's a thing going around right now, where, we don't know what it is, if we knew what it is, we'd go find out, but traffic cones are showing up on the doorsteps in the front door of police officers' homes as sort of a sign, we know where you live. That's happened to multiple officers in Franklin County. None of ours, but these are the things they spread, it's a network, they talk to each other, right? Families are taking stickers off their cars from where they were supporting their officers. These are things that's going on in their world, that I want you to be aware of. I asked them, how much confidence do they have, though, if something was to happen with them doing their job with city leadership, which myself included. Only 21% of them had any confidence and would support them. That's a concern for me, that's a concern for morale. Every six to eight months, I do the surveys, and I ask about morale. Again, it has to be anonymous. Since I've been here, between 1 and 10 scale, I've never wanted to drop, as a whole, below 8. If I'm in the 8 range, I'm usually pretty good, and we have never dropped below 8 since I've been here. We have been to high 9s, and second shift supervision was at 9.8 last year. Right now, we're at 5. That's the nature I got from the 5. I'm not blaming, laying on that to anybody, I am saying that as much as we want to address this other issue, we have to remember that these are our employees, they work for us, they're human beings, and they have to have some confidence in the way they're going to go. And here's a phrase that was said to me, "I am more than willing to run, or have you send me to bullets and die for this city, I am not willing to go to prison for it." So, that set with me pretty hard. If you start to look at what's going on around the nation, I understand we're, there's a need to fix something, and there's no doubt about it. I meet with the team of chiefs of police, I've met with General Assembly people, I've been telling them, this is, there are some needs, so has the other chiefs, to make some changes, because every profession's got bad actors, and we need to deal with them, and we need the power to deal with them swiftly. We know who they are, if they just give us the power to do it, right? So, and I'm not talking about here, but just as a profession. And so these officers are good folks, putting their lives on the line, and watching, just like everybody else is, the national events, or as we talk about, social media stuff, and they're watching officers get arrested and go to jail for what even they were trained in. And so they're nervous, and they're concerned, and they're worried just slightly about what's going to happen if they are just doing their job. Or as we said with one, you have a two-year-old kid, how important is it to get that heroin underneath that bed, knowing that something could go south? And you don't see that kid get into your 12, because you have a 10-year sentence. So, they're backing off, and that's not good for our safety. We spent many, many years creating a perception in Whitehall, that you don't want to come here, commit the crime, you come here, they want to come find you, and that has been a major, major staple in what we do to keep this city safe, a major staple. Now that's backing off, and, I guess we're recording, if the word starts spreading enough, the criminals are getting, they're getting, they're believing that they can get by those officers in communities, because officers, police officers in general, they are on their heels, and they're not, they're not being the officers that I'm used to being, and I'm not as comfortable to push them to do it, because I'm as every bit as concerned for them as they are. So, we are making some changes, we're meeting next week to go over our strategic plan again. We're doing some of it's really good, I like some of the ideas about getting out on foot and more, they've been doing that, but this is, they're going to switch some theft initiatives, excuse me, that we've been doing with foot patrol initiatives, community relations, and hopefully that will do some good for relationships. But, when our folks hear these kinds of things, one of the things that stands out to me is, when I hear someone very, very dear to me, without saying names, some of them very, very dear to me, say to me that he has a plan for me to reconcile Whitehall Police Department's relationship with the citizens of Whitehall, well-intended, I know, I love the man, but I'm telling you, that hurts to this department to hear, with that kind of relationship that we have built over these years, with a 90% satisfaction rating, we have to fix something. We, this department had nothing to do with what happened in Minneapolis, and we despise it like everybody else does, and so I think it's important that I ask, that we do a couple of things. I would ask, because I know we don't know everything, right, I would ask that members of the council, the mayor already knows what we're doing, but members of the council, spend time over our police department. I would open up those doors to you, you can look at anything you want to look at, you're welcome to see what, how they operate, I would encourage you, ride with some officers, spend some time in their roll call, talk to them. I would ask you to do that, and I'd ask you to help, to help me take a look at the department's operations, and let me know whether there's a problem, because I assure you, in my mind, and I've been fighting this issue similar to this for many years in my career, I've almost got 30 years on this, if there's anybody going to hold them accountable, it will be me, way before any of you, I assure you, and they'll tell you that too. But if I'm missing something, I can be known. And when council passes this, without us having a lot of conversation with it, us having a conversation with it, and it has us addressed it, it sort of has the feels of the department that is a concern with the police department from Whitehall's council members, or is it something that's not related to us, but we just don't know that, and they don't have the answer either way, so that the fault has to be for them, land with, they think work are the problem too. And so because of that, I would ask you to spend some time with them. The mayor knows, I will do my best, always, to do the right thing for this department and the city, to keep it safe. I've had, I've left it on the table as long as necessary, I'm here for Whitehall as long as it needs me. And when you don't need me, I'll leave the second you don't need me, that's really simple. But I need you to tell me what we need us to do, because you folks are the ones that run the show, and just a couple of little words didn't work for us, so we need just a little bit more to help us. And one of the other ways you could do that for me, is we have identified a couple of problem areas, and hopefully we can have some discussions later about it, but the Whitehall Police Department absolutely has a diversity problem, we don't have enough minorities working in our police department, and that absolutely has nothing to do with the efforts of the officers to recruit, the money that we've spent, that you gave us to spend, to recruit, bringing people in and mentoring them through our processes interns, to our minorities who just can't get sent to us on a civil service list. I have no power over that. We lost a tremendous officer, because he, I couldn't get the list from civil service to have his name on it, and go somewhere else, and we had him working for us for a year, so, as an intern. These are things that, there are things that can be fixed at Whitehall, and it isn't because we don't want to hire people, and you don't want us lowering our standards in order to do anything of that nature. You want us, and civil service pretty much tells us who can get in. So, I think, I would ask that you fix that problem, or think about fixing that problem. And lastly, I think this, I think all of you have to support police officers, that's what I get from every single person I speak with. I have spent the last few weeks having to keep saying that to my folks. This is what I hear from them, when they talk to me, that this is a great department, this is a good group of people, we don't have any issues with Whitehall Police Department. I believe that's what I get from you guys. And the work they've done, I know you support. So I would ask, in line with what we just asked of Ordinance 49, which the police department is 100% supportive of, taking care of those issues, the nation needs to take care of those issues, but I would also say, this body needs to reassure those officers, in some form or another, I would ask for an ordinance, recognizing the hard work and efforts that they've done over the last three years, and the appreciation from this city, and from the city council, for the work that they've done for the three years, the sacrifices that they just put in during COVID-19, some of them literally thought they were going to survive, some of them today are homesick. We have some issues, for sure, behavioral things here and there, and we'll hold them accountable, and we'll all get grievances, and we'll deal with them. These are all little things, these are not things that we require us to get rid of people for, these are good, hard-working police officers, and I need them, the city needs them, to know that their council, their city leadership has their back, if we have to kick a door in to get a drug dealer, and he pulls a gun up at one of our auxiliary officers' face to get it, and we've got to pull the trigger to save a police officer's life, that they're not going to go to jail afterwards for it. That's what they need to know, they need to know they're going to have your support. We will get rid of the bad cops. I don't know if it could be bad cops in that sense, in Whitehall Police Department. So I'm asking you to think about that, and requesting if you have any questions on statistics and numbers, it takes some time to go through all those, but I assure you, standing as I'm standing here, or I would actually advise, you replace me if I'm incorrect, that if we have racial issues, overt racial issues in Whitehall Police Department, I have utterly felt, I should not be here. If we have implicit bias, welcome to the human race. So that's my thoughts, and I hope that you guys can help us with that, and we appreciate that. Any questions?
I want to apologize for leaving, I've got a family problem with my daughter and the baby, and my prayers, I know the rest of us watching, so it's tough right now, so. I thoroughly support you guys. When I look and see things that say, kill a cop, like they did downtown, kill, cops should be dead, that's horrible, that's horrible. I made this statement on June 2nd. I don't know a bad cop, and I know quite a few Whitehall police officers, because one bad cop did something really bad, that's going to be, that he's going to pay for it the rest of his life, hopefully, which is a good thing in Minneapolis, he's a very bad officer, he's a bad man, we have good police people across the street, and I thank you, and I appreciate it, and they know how I feel, I was over there Friday and addressed a couple of them, cleared up a couple of issues. I was over there Friday and addressed a couple of them, cleared up a couple of issues. And I'm proud of our police department. I'm very proud. I go out of my way when I see them to come back to say hi to them, thank you, and be safe. And I want to thank you for the job that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
When's roll call? When's roll call? You said come by.
Beginning of each shift.
So seven, three, and eleven.
Got to be there till seven and eleven, Joey. Seven, eleven.
And I would just add that I had an opportunity to go over for roll call last Thursday. And I completely get where you're coming from, chief, because you're right. That the morale is, it's a struggle, I think. And it's not because they want it to be, it's just because of everything that's going on. I actually address them not only as the city council president, but as a citizen because I'm basically thanking them twice. Because I do support everything that's going on over there with all the officers and yourself as a citizen, because I've unfortunately had to have some interaction with you. Well, I'm not, I didn't think bad, but because of things around me. And every time that's happened, the force has been out there, professional, courteous, and it's just been terrific. And I do think that in testified times like that with everything ramped up so much, it really does intensify, and it makes guys feel like they're an island. And that's kind of feeling that I was getting. And that's the last thing I want any, what your department to feel that way because that's just not the case whatsoever. Because as I was joking with them, who's the first person you call when something bad's going on? Guess what? It's the police, and that, they always show up. And to have to hold all their emotions going in, because it's ramped up for them as well, what we've got going on with COVID-19 and Minneapolis, it just gets going and going. So they've got to compartmentalize so much more and still do their jobs. So the stress on them is very significant, and I get it. And I do appreciate what, everything, everything that they're doing.
Mr. President, thank you.
I also, I wanted to give kudos to one of the police officers. He honestly probably didn't even realize it was me on city council, but he stopped by my neighbors and brought my son and the neighbor kid's popsicles and just talked to our neighbors, and it just like made their day. Like, I don't even think he realized like how big of an impact he had on it. And it was just really nice to see. It was like two weeks ago.
Mr. President, I'd like to say something. First of all, I want to thank you, and I appreciate your, your leadership, Chief Chris. You are, I believe, a stand-up person. I've had several conversations with you from the time I moved here. So I do believe in your leadership, and I believe that you're very genuine in what you say. And I know that you will honor everything that you've said. We've had several conversations. And I also want to talk about ordinance forty-nine from the perspective of kind of answering your question. And I believe that it was response from the county, state, and national response to what happened. It is not, it was not specifically Whitehall officers. Because I've had, my interactions with Whitehall officers have been good interactions. I've had several conversations with them. And I think in order to get more of an idea, I think an eye-opening experience for me is when I attended the awards dinner. And I saw things that I didn't know existed, okay? Because I was not a part of that until I went to the dinner. And I really appreciate the hard work that the officers do and continue to do. Never do I want anybody to lower their standards at all. I believe that they have a very difficult job, just like a lot of other people have difficult jobs as well. And I believe with your leadership, they'll maneuver through that. But no, I'm confident, I'm confident in what you do. And I know, based upon the type of department that you run, it trickles down. So they have confidence. I believe there's confidence there. The other thing that I wanted to address was foot patrol and building relationships. Because I think that's essential to community policing. Saturday, and I remember, as we had a conversation earlier, I remembered one of the officer's name, but not the other. And I won't say, he's a very good-looking officer, dark hair. But the relationship he had with those children, and I could tell the relationship because of how they greeted each other, how they joked around with each other, that it's just not, I'm stopping by, checking this out, and I'm leaving. They've had genuine relationships with those. And that really made my heart happy when I saw that. And so, kudos to Officer Hovary, no, is it?
Who is he?
Okay. And the other officer, if I see him, once I come to your roll call, I'll be able to point him out, and I will say something to him myself. I just, I just believe that we're in difficult times. And in my, in my humble belief, in my prayers, that it will pass. And I believe that as a community, we can work together because that's one of the things that I stated with the officers that I had a conversation with. This is an example of community policing. That's what I said to them. And was very happy to see how they reacted to even my presence and coming up and having conversations. So I would just, I would just say, it's a sign of the times. And it's not particular, based on a particular officer or anything. It is, there are things happening in this nation that has never happened before, in this country. And even in cities. And so we will weather the storm. I just believe that. And working together, that will, that will happen. And you have my support, and I will continue to keep our relationship and open our conversation. But thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, chief, I'd like to say something. You know, a while back, we were pushing for initiatives that created proactive policing. And I'll use Officer McDowell as an example. And the reason I use that is because he was very successful in what he did. Today, we see that more and more on our streets, out of your staff. And Lori's right, it's out there. I interact with them, they sometimes don't know who I am, but they're always like President Potter said, very professional and caring and understanding. But the thing I want to tell you, those two things first, is it breaks my heart to see communities and their leadership looking at defunding and taking equipment away from the people that protect and serve. That's crazy. That's just careless thought out of leadership that are supposed to protect a community. I don't think you'll ever see that here, and we have never discussed anything closer, close to that. And I think the second thing has escaped me here for a second. Yeah, it has. But anyway, I just want to say, we're proud of you. These are scary times. It's really not a good time to be in the industry you're in. And like Lori says, hopefully we move through it quickly. But you have our support, and there's no way you can defund the people that protect and serve a community because then you have lawlessness, and it's obvious what happens. But I did think about what the second thing was. Diversity and inclusion. I don't think anybody on council's ever been involved in hiring a police officer. We may fund it, but we're not part of that process of hiring. So my statement would be that if you're involved in that, or the mayor's involved in that, then fix it. It'll take time, but fix it.
At the beginning of the year, I had the opportunity to go ahead and to change from chairperson of community engagement to chairperson public safety. And I was really excited to go ahead and to do that. You and I've talked, you know, we've started our block watch many years ago. We've continued that. The one thing that I absolutely love since you have taken over is your heart. You wear your heart on your sleeve. And tonight, I tell you what, it made me sad because I, you, it sounded to me as if you felt that we went ahead and we wrote this against the police officers. And my gosh, it didn't have, I didn't feel that it had anything to do with that whatsoever. I just really felt that it was about just bringing more diversity into our city and to celebrate all of the wonderful ethnicities and traditions and people that are here in Whitehall. You know, I would love to be able to help more. I just, I need to know how. When I forward you a letter from a citizen, I don't do it to be mean. I do it so, because I want you to be aware of what's going on in the city. And I hope that you do know that in my sentences to you, I always say, I appreciate everything that you do, and I totally do. At the beginning of the year, you and I had a very sensitive conversation about some things. And you were so sincere and so honest with me. And it could have been a very bad situation. And by listening to you, I really felt so much better. So I know that our city is getting the best from you and from your department. And I really do appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you.
You were a good hire, chief.
Can I get to say?
Yeah. Damn good.
You passed your audition.
Damn good, huh?
Chief, thank you. Just, just a quick word, I'm not going to lather on, but I am going to take this off. I'm going to go rogue for a second and say, I've said for years, Whitehall Police is second to none in central Ohio and across the nation. And I'll fight anyone on that. I have a son who is a police officer, a brother, retired police officer, and a cousin, retired sheriff. And I'll tell you what, you folks are the finest, and you will always have my support.
Thank you, and I agree with that.
Thank you, sir.
I don't want to take up any time, but I would like to say in this, if I may take liberty for a second, to just say, I really didn't want it to totally sound like we felt like we're victimized. I want to make sure that's clear, right? I say these guys often, police cannot be victims. It's not possible unless you kill one of them. They can't be victims because if we're victims, then there's nobody left. I get that. But I will tell you the concerns mostly, we think, and this is repeated often, and I'd like to leave you with that, is that we realize that somewhere, some grandmother's on her knees praying every single day because she's already lost her daughters and overdosed her against shooting. And she doesn't want one of those her grandkids. One's already caught up in stuff, and the other one's in human trafficking. And she's praying every day. And those are the ones that we work for. And that's who we want to still have the ability to get in there, to get those bad apples away from her and her family, and get them out of those situations. And what you're doing in ordinance forty-nine to help the community with economics and jobs and health and all those other things is only going to add steroids to what we're trying to do. So we are totally supportive of that. They, like I said before, they just probably need to hear, I knew that I've talked to you guys. They need to hear, not just in passing, but the same way they heard the other one. I think through another ordinance, recognizing what you just said to me. I would ask for that. And that's all I'm saying.
Chief, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
It's now time for our first poll public of the evening. And Ms. Hodgson has shared with me that she's got several items that she'll be reading in.
Deana Hutchinson, four to six, thirty-five Louie's Avenue, Whitehall, Ohio. I would like to present my concerns regarding the children selling water on multiple street corners within the city of Whitehall. This has been going on for four years now and is rapidly turning into an unsafe venture for our youth of Whitehall. The situation has been presented to several council members as where, as well as the mayor and economic development and public service director. Not only are they running into the street to deliver the water to customers, it is also at times causing traffic to back up. Some drivers do not have the patience to wait and proceed to drive around the stop cars to run the stop sign to resume their travel down our streets. This is possibly going to result in a child getting hit by a car or creating an automobile accident. It has been stated that no legislation or city code will protect our children at this point. Chapter seven thirty-seven, street vendors of food should cover most of the regulations that are being violated with the sale of water and/or other drinks on our street corners. Chapter five seventeen point twenty-nine covers the litter, littering. Chapter seven forty-five point oh nine, six, at no time shall any solicitor or peddler construct, obstruct any street, alley, public right-of-way, sidewalk, or driveway. Chapter seven sixty-six point oh one, shopping cart regulations impounding removal prohibited. These are just a few examples of current legislation that could be enforced. In the committee meeting held on July fourteenth, it was made clear that the city administration does not believe there's anything unsafe or any reason to address the situation. Please consider enforcing current legislation or update the current legislation so these children can continue to sell their water and other drinks to citizens in a safe manner for all. Lisa Vanderbilt, six oh two Collingwood Avenue, Whitehall, Ohio. I want to share with you how our new recycling bin has changed our lives for many reasons. In the beginning of 2020, we chose to use the sixty-four gallon red recycling bin on wheels to improve our recycling efforts and reduce the amount of trash we dispose of each week. I should preface, we have been using a sixty-four gallon trash bin supplied by the trash company for several years now. We like that the bins have wheels, and it is very easy to move them to the street, and the lid ensures wildlife can't get into it. After doing our homework to learn what items could be recycled, I will admit, it took, it took a couple of weeks for every one in our household to master separating trash from recycling items. However, once everyone developed a habit and routine of recycling has become very easy. We were shocked to see just how much of our trash was recyclable. Our recycle bin has helped to reduce our trash output by fifty to seventy percent. We have also become more conscientious about collapsing, consolidating our trash and recycle levels, which has provided increased space. While every household is different, our family has been successful adapting to the program, and we look forward to helping the environment while reducing the amount of trash which ends up in the landfill. In addition, I thought I'd share, many grocery stores, Kroger's, Giant, Eagle, et cetera, have developed a recycling drop-off program for bubble wrap, plastic overwrap around paper towels, toilet paper, water bottles, et cetera, cereal box liners, bread bags, produce bags, newspaper sleeves, plastic shipping envelopes, and clean sandwich bags. We are very supportive of the recycling program and look forward to the city of Whitehall implementing the standard dice trash recycling program so every resident can become a part of this effort. Gerald Dixon, thirty-eight seventy-seven Doby Street, Whitehall, Ohio. Last week, Councilperson Elmore shared her feelings about the roles of council and administration, that which is her right if deemed meritorious. In that, she said that council's job was to legislate and appropriate money, and that the citizens voted her in to oversee the budget, the finances, and appropriate money based upon the administration and how they determine what funds are needed in what areas. I'm afraid Councilor Elmore's list actually lies somewhere below that of the fuller list, councils' duties entail. For instance, there was no mention of council acting as the citizens' oversight in regard to budgets or finances, or council's power to use their votes to stand up for the rights and interests of citizens. All very important aspects of the job. That your role here are far greater than merely acting as rubber stamps for whatever the administration wants. Also not mentioned were many pieces of legislation council has passed that had nothing to do with appropriating money, like the legislation banning portable basketball hoops or the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. Creating and passing legislation based on community needs or necessities is not administrative. Therefore, issues brought by constituents to their legislative representatives to address Therefore, issues brought by constituents to their legislative representatives to address community concerns is entirely within your purview. So just to clarify for everyone, including the citizens watching, here is a partial list of other responsibilities council does have as legislators. Review current laws and statutes to determine where stated concerns fall within existing legislation, and research and write new legislation to address concerns if nothing is in place. Develop bills, drafts of law that they want their fellow legislators to approve. Draft or approve policies, regulations, budgets, and programs. Debate and analyze the impact of proposed laws. Vote on bills and on motions to enact them into law. Serve on committees, panels, and study groups for special policy issues. Listen to and address the concerns of people they represent. Invite and listen to testimony from people who are concerned about an issue or likely to be affected by the law if it is passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oggs. Is that everything for first poll public? Thank you. Now, standing committee reports, administration and financial management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration, financial management did meet last week. Our minutes are on file, and we have a couple items that will be introduced tonight. We will meet again next Tuesday after 6:30, right here.
Thank you. Community and elder advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, President Potter. Community and elder advocacy did meet last week. Our minutes are on file. We have no pending legislation. However, I will address some other community advocacy issues during poll public.
Very good. Thank you. Community standards and enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community standards and enforcement met last Tuesday. Minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Economic development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic development met last week. Our minutes are on file. I will meet sometime after 6:30 next week.
Very good. Infrastructure, maintenance, and services, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure, maintenance, and services met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We do have one ordinance. It's first reading, it's gonna go for three readings. We will meet sometime next Tuesday, or here, around 6:00. I have to send it back.
Thank you, yeah.
Do that all the time.
Public safety, Chairperson Connison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public safety met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime around 6:30.
Very good. Last but certainly not least, Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back next week. I would like to say that last week, Councilperson Elmore brought up a situation which went by our Horton Davis, John Bishop Park, about the safety of masking and social distancing. And I did tell council that I would be making a phone call, which I did, and I spoke with the president of the league very early the next morning. He said he did realize that he had an issue last Tuesday. Things would be better if they announced it Wednesday, which my daughter and I were there from about 6:20 till 5 till 8:00. And we walked all the diamonds, as there was a Whitehall police officer there as well. Social distancing was being maintained, and that's a good thing. I'm glad that he listened to me. I had spoken with the mayor, and she had told me that she had heard that he made a special announcement over the loudspeaker prior to any of the ballgames, to all the coaches. So I just wanted to report that back to council. We'll meet again next week in the back after 6:30, absolutely right here.
Thank you, Chairperson Cantor. That was some good information. Official reports, Mayor Magr.
Good evening, everyone. Chief Crispin's addressed council, and I know that he had specifically mentioned civil service testing basically not living up to what are the needs of the city of Whitehall. I believe he brought this up to you because it may require legislation after research if we move forward with this. So that was one of the reasons he brought that up to you. It's, we're gonna take a lot of research into this to see exactly what's holding us back and what we can do outside the parameters, you know, of civil service. Also, I'm not saying that civil service is a bad thing. I'm just saying that it's very hard. We do not have any insight into what is almost test. So we can't tell if they're racially biased or not, because we are not allowed to look at the test, and the individual test taker is not allowed to go over the test after he has been graded on it. And in fact, when we have mentioned it to the test-taking company, they have told us, well, our own internal department tells us if it's racially biased or not, which I have a problem with, because there's no outside entity to determine that. So unfortunately, we had a great candidate, we've had a few great candidates, that have not been able to get, you know, one of the highest scores on the test. And believe me, I believe in test-taking, but I know that testing is not the only thing that makes a good police officer or a good civil servant. So that is going to be studied, and I just wanted to bring that up to council. Also, I think it's important that Deanna Hutchinson did bring up some good questions regarding the code. I will be looking at those certainly to see if they apply in the subject that she has brought forward. And I also have talked with Attorney Vivens. He and his wife, Joy, are working on a program, and they are trying to, you know, work with these young people. I would call them very industrious young people, to get them into maybe a different type of job situation. And I do know that they're working very diligently on this. And when I went down Robinwood on, I believe it was Saturday, I noticed they were wearing orange safety vests, and I really appreciated that. They had on face masks, and they had on plastic gloves. And so I do believe that some of them are taking those jobs very seriously, and they would be a great employee for someone, is all I can say. So I will take a look at those codes that were mentioned and see if they, a reason why they would or would not apply in this situation. And I want to say, I appreciate the comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. See, Attorney Vivens is not with us this evening. City Honor Miller is not with us this evening. Director of Development and Public Service is not with us this evening. Director of Public Service, Van Greg, is with us this evening. Do you have a report for us?
I have an official report. I was here, obviously, listening to the chief and hearing the responses, and it's good to be back, too.
It's good to see you.
Always good to see you.
Thank you. Treasurer Quinsel is not with us this evening. The following official reports have been filed into council office since the last meeting, and those would include the honor's expense report for June 2020, the honor's bank report for June 2020, the honor's statement of cash position report for June 2020, the honor's review report for June 2020, the treasurer's investment report for June 2020, the treasurer's activity by fund report for June 2020, the treasurer's fund reconciliation report for June 2020, and the mayor's report to council for June 2020. Under communications, petitions, and claims, we have one item, and that is the minutes for the July 2nd, 2020 meeting of the planning commission. At this time, I would ask Ms. Oggs to take a roll call as to whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Under third reading this evening, we have got no legislation for third reading, as is the case with second reading, there's no legislation there tonight either. Under first reading, we have ordinance 552020 approving and making a supplemental appropriation an amount of $21,300 for unappropriate monies in the general fund 101 to self-funded health insurance administrative expense account 101-900.51,1016, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 552020 and move for suspension of all rules.
Second. Ordinance 552020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Morrison, with the request for suspension of all rules. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey has made a motion to adopt, seconded by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Connison, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Oggs, please call roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Last week, Attorney Michael Bivens said, "All it takes is looking at this from a lens of trying to make a difference instead of trying to penalize them for trying to make extra money. I want to clear this misnomer up. It is not, I repeat, not, the intent or the spirit of the complaints to somehow penalize them for the selling of the water itself or stop the kids from selling water. The intent is merely to get them to behave in a responsible manner towards the community they're doing the selling in. This is a very important distinction which Attorney Bivens and others have confused. Therefore, its truth must be clarified for the record. As well, I want to simply say that it is my hope, the proposal I sent everyone with common sense guidelines to help the teens selling water on the street corners safely and responsibly and keep our community and neighborhoods in Whitehall clean and safe and clean will be given the rightful consideration they are due. The eyewitness accounts of the safety issues, the abhorrent behavior and the trashing of mine and others' neighborhoods are real and true, that which are made, to my knowledge, without the taint of racism charges as made by Mr. Woodruff and Councilor Elmore. The teens, though, through their actions and behavior, have themselves shown the need for the city to step in and step up in making certain, not that the kids don't have the ability to sell water, but that they do so following responsible safety and behavioral guidelines which hold them accountable and make the experience for everyone, kids and community, a more positive and happy one. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Aug. Now we'll get to community date board. Does anyone have anything for community date board?
Splash pads open, going strong. Get your reservations in. I think that's all I have. Okay.
I'll be giving out some awards this week over at John Bishop, the amphitheater, for all the lovely animals that were put on the Whitehall Community Celebration Association page. So come on out Thursday and Friday evening at 7:00, and we're going to let them walk across the stage, we're going to take some pictures, and...
Very nice.
Have some fun.
We also have football sign-ups at the ballpark there in Atona. Get your kids signed up, cheerleading, sign up. The sign-ups are going very well, I might add, so while you're there, stop taking sessions, and get yourself something to drink, a bag of popcorn, water, pop. Watch a ballgame as well.
Nice. Anything else? Now it's time for poll council. Mr. Bailey?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Just I thank all the folks that sent in their comments for poll public. Well said, and I think everybody's hearing those comments, and a lot of them have already been discussed, but I appreciate your input, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, everyone, for watching this evening. Thanks for the comments and coming in, and really appreciated Chief Crispin's presentation. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to welcome Councilwoman Joanna Heck back. I'm glad you're back with us and your family's healthy, and hope you guys stay safe. Also, I'd like to thank all that are watching through Facebook Live and to those who have polled public through email. I'd like the opportunity to address comments in poll public, as I understand that our powers are within section two. Although I did not read the exhaustive list of that, I am well aware of our role on council and why I was elected. I'd like to also thank Chief Crispin for the information. I thought it was well-prepared, great presentation. I spoke with him earlier today, we had great conversation, and we'll continue to have a good conversation and work together to ensure that community policing and just community relationship is strengthened. I'd like to address also two other issues, and that is, and I believe Chief Crispin spoke to one of them, and that's implicit biases that we all have, although maybe we don't think we do, but we all do. And it's also known as implicit social... Biases refer to attitudes or stereotypes that affect our understandings, actions, and decisions in an unconscious manner, which studies show we learn through past experiences. And we have them whether we recognize it consciously or subconsciously, I mean unconsciously. So I'll just leave that there. The other issue that I'd like to address is the kids selling water at Donny and Robinwood. And although I've driven down Broad Street, passing Robinwood on Broad Street, I've never seen any kids out there, and I hadn't seen people. And, you know, it's 24 hours in a day, and it's not to say that we don't all see people at certain times. I also drove down Fairway Boulevard, all the way straight down Main Street, and I didn't see any kids during that time, and this was on Saturday, and went down Robinwood. So when we and my husband went down Robinwood, we passed, we did see kids on Donny and Robinwood. And we passed, didn't even, you know, we stopped at the four-way stop, kept going, went down Broad Street, crossed Broad Street, turned around and came back. Then we stopped, and I'll go back to something Attorney Bivens stated when asked by Councilman Rodriguez regarding outreach, what does it entail? Attorney Bivens basically stated, it entails just having a heart to help the kids, and that is all it is. Last Saturday, like I stated, my husband and I, we stopped by. We stopped by and we had a conversation with those kids for a couple hours, we stayed out there. During that time, there were officers that came by, that's when I was speaking with Chief Crispin and saw their interaction, and I know they have a good relationship with those officers because I witnessed that relationship happening. I discussed community complaints and how possibly to alleviate those, such as making sure the area stayed clean, safety concerns, like kids going out into the street. And what I witnessed while being out there were cars not stopping, and there were no, you know, not stopping at all. I almost got hit at a stop because, you know, all the cars were... It was my right of way, I was going to walk through, and I did because the car just kept going. It was a rolling, keep going. So safety is an issue out there, and especially with cars not stopping at the four-way. So nevertheless, we had great conversation with the young men, Isaiah Carlos, Dejwan, and Dee. They were very respectful to us. Two of the young men attend Whitehall Yearling High School, one attends Rosemore, and the other attends Atona. As I shared the community concerns, they were very forthcoming with some of the issues that have been happening to them, like being shot with paintball guns and called expletives and racial slurs. And I'm sure kids will be kids, as we were all kids before. And I'm going to be making childlike probably until I'm no longer here, because I just believe that allows us to ask questions and seek understanding and learn from each other. But my husband had ordered vests, even before all vests, just hearing complaints. He ordered those vests, and they happened to come in on Saturday. So he went home and went and got those vests. After he came back, I had, well, prior to that, I had gone to Target because I understand that there was trash there, so I bought trash bags for those kids. I bought paper towels, gave them gloves, because we're in the middle of a pandemic, and everybody needs to be safe. The kids, the cars they approached, I spoke with them regarding running out in the street or even going out in the street, that one person should be approaching the car, not a whole bunch of kids approaching the car, because, again, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we are social distancing. Now, one thing I did witness, they did have masks on when we got there. So the only other thing that I thought was needed was, you know, the items that I bought, and along with some water and data rates, because I said I was making an investment in them, because it's very difficult. Sales is difficult, and that's what they're actually doing. They are operating in a sales arena, and I thought they were doing very well. There were cars that I witnessed that didn't want water, just handed them handfuls of ones and money, just because they were kids trying to do their best, and a part of that is staying out of trouble and working. At the end of the day, all kids need direction, and we are here to help them because we have a heart for kids. And I would just say that all of us should just go out and spend, you know, I'm not saying us, because there have been people that have went out, but as a community, we need to spend time and give our kids direction if they don't have that direction, because it does take a village to raise a child. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Elmore, thank you. Ms. Coniston?
Thank you. Want to thank all the people that have sent in their emails and their letters and have given, we've done calls, hopefully, I've tried my best to go ahead and to talk with many of you and send back some emails. I know I still have some to do. And I talked with council members, and I think we should address this a little bit more next week in our committee. Now's definitely not the time that I want to do that, but what I've noticed is everybody has said the same thing. We all want the best for our children, we all want them to be safe, we all want them to learn, we all want them to achieve, we all want their success, so we just need to find a way that we can go ahead and allow them to do that while also really making sure of their safety. It's one of those times, 2020, it's not even one of those times, it's the whole 2020 year that's just crazy, and it's nice to see these students get out and to be trying their best, so hopefully, we can go ahead and to find a way to allow them to do more of that. I want to thank everybody for watching, I want everybody to stay safe, I want the police to know that I see you, I appreciate you, keep doing the great job that you do, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Coniston. Mr. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank everybody for watching, also my colleagues or comments. I'm glad we now realize that this is a safety issue with these young adults. Some brought race into it, far less from the truth, this is a major safety issue. I'm glad they do have the orange vest. I noticed them today, or the other day. This morning, I noticed they didn't have them on. About 45 minutes, and there was only one individual. About 45 minutes later, there were three there, and they had them on. But, you know, if you have a young adult that's running alongside of a car trying to sell water, and I do mean running, eastbound on Donny, that's a problem. That's a problem. With Mrs. Hutchinson calling in with 757, 517, 745096, 76601, hopefully, we can enforce this. I'm glad people are going out and looking and to see. I want to thank everybody that has called me. I've gotten back with all but two of you, and two of you were still playing phone tag, but were leaving very good messages. And I want to thank you very much for that. I agree with Councilperson Coniston, we do need to discuss this more. This is not just going to go away. It'll take maybe a Saturday or Sunday drive or a Tuesday drive just to go out and look at the city, to see what's going on. That's a good thing, but this is just not a Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday, Tuesday thing. This is an all-day affair. Tonight, by 15, I went by, there was a very, very, very young lady. Trash all over on the northwest corner of Downey. No vests, no youth around, no male kids around, female, might have been seven years of age. She eventually left on her bicycle, trying to pull this cooler across Robinwood. Councilperson Elmore is correct, they don't stop at that stop sign. Let's pray to God no kid gets hurt or gets killed. It's the last thing that we want to see. So, and I do hope we come up with a solution. I hear you, and again, I thank you very much. We also received, before I get into that, I want to commend Councilperson Rodriguez from last week for bringing up the cart issue. Some have to think that they use their own carts. Well, they don't use their own carts. They're still in English Village. I saw them again twice today. So they are using the carts. We received an email, every member of council received an email from Mr. Dixon about our shopping carts legislation, 76601. Go out and look, there's one store in this city that's complying, and that is Kroger at Great Eastern. So if we can eliminate that problem, we eliminate some of the junk, we eliminate them taking carts, which is theft. So, Chris, I want to thank you again for bringing that up, because that's very important where they're doing this. Our Whitehall Police, I set it back on June 2nd, which was the first public meeting after the horrible murder of Mr. Floyd in Minneapolis. But we do have the best police department in Franklin County, bar none. I give them my support 100%. When I saw on High Street some of the artwork that said, "Kill the pigs, kill the police", that's probably a horrible thing, to wish death on anybody. I know we're going through a very, very tough society in this day and age with a lot of hatred, but to wish death is bad. We all can do better on this, and I hope this country comes together. So I ask you for my prayers for my daughter tonight, and I love you girls, and Daddy will see you soon. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. Ms. Heck, and welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It is great to be back. Thank you, everybody that is watching from home. I appreciate Chief Crispin coming in and taking the time to speak to us more and give us a different perspective, because I feel like most of us did not see his perspective when he passed by. That was definitely nice to get that perspective, and I had met with him separately to go in depth with some other things, and I appreciated him taking the time on that as well. Thank you for everybody that wrote in. Lisa, in particular, I wasn't here with the trash, the whole trash thing, I watched from home the presentation. I have a huge family, for those that don't know, and I was really skeptical about the one trash can, about all of that, because we, West Ken, we accumulate a lot of trash.
We do, yes.
I was pleasantly surprised at how much we recycled. Like, it is amazing, we fill that bin up every time, but I just, I tried to recycle before, those room bins are not conducive, so it was really a surprise to see how much we recycled versus threw away, and that was nice to see, and I was just impressed by that, so I thank Lisa for taking the time to write in for that. And that's all I have for tonight. I hope everybody stays safe.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Perezadé. Welcome back, Ms. Heck, good to hear. Also, I would like to thank those who sent in comments, I listened to them, and some of them had some very good points in them. Thank those who are watching this evening, and a special thanks to Chief Crispin and his presentation. He laid out things very well, and some things that some of us maybe not even thought of, and I really do support the city groups, they are great. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I'll just wrap up. I also thank everybody for taking the time to join us via streaming on Facebook. I'd also like to thank those folks that wrote in for the poll publics. It's always good to get comments back, and obviously, we get some very constructive things out of that. And again, Chief Crispin, I thought that was very timely that he came in to share with us the items that he did. And I, too, fully support our police department and our safety forces, all of our safety forces, and hate to think that any of them feel anything different than that, because I think that we all collectively share that, but to his point, it just doesn't get said so, does not get said so often enough, and it was very eye-opening. I know Wes went over and I went over the roll call, and I think it was appreciated, and again, just to hear firsthand, so I'd encourage everyone on council to do that as well when time allows. That is all I have. At this time, I would accept...
Second. Mr. President?
Okay.
I'll move to adjourn in a second.
Okay, so, motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez to adjourn.
You don't even want to get a challenge anymore, do you?
No. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
She said next day.
Bailey?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
She said yes.
Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Are we starting?
We are adjourned.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.